Everybody. Unless you wanted me to wait, Regan?
No, that's, that's fine. I just ask if Daphne is ready to go if Bronwyn's not.
Nope. Let's go ahead and get started then. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our joint study session with the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Just as general information, this study session is an informal meeting involving discussion between and among the city council, commissioners and city staff regarding policy issues. They may involve, the study session may involve presentations, feedback brainstorming regarding further work to be done by the staff on key policy matters. And this city council special meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. That will call this study session to order. And let's do a roll call. And for the ease of Krista, I will just have everybody introduce themselves. And I'll start in my upper left. Manny?
Good mor- good, good morning. I'm still at work. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Monty Domi. I am part of the ECSJ Commission. Very nice to meet those if I haven't, but yeah, glad to be here.
Thank you, Monty. Jennifer?
Expecting to be so quickly. I'm Jennifer Harjhausen. I am a council member and thrilled to have our first joint meeting with you all.
Chuck? You're on mute, sir.
You hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Chuckie Jadi, and I will be starting off for Bronwyn as we get to go forward. They've asked me to fill in at least to read the mission statement, but please go on with the introductions.
Thank you, Chuck. Joe?
Hi, I'm Justice Simomo. I am on the council. This is gonna be fun having our first joint meeting together, guys. Looking forward to this.
Thank you, Joe. Sean?
Hello, everyone. My name is Sean Smith. I'm on the council as well. I too am looking forward to tonight's meeting, learning more about your goals and mission statement and vision. So yeah, look forward to it.
Thank you, Sean. Christina?
Hi, folks. Christina Saltis here, one of the council members. And I'm super thrilled again, just like Jen. There's so many of you on this commission and I just cannot wait to hear and see where we go from here.
Thank you, Christina. Alex?
Hi, I'm Alex and I'm on the ECSJ Commission, looking forward to our discussion.
Thank you, Alex. Daphne?
Daphne Hernandez, Assistant Planner and Staff Liaison for the City of Covington.
Thank you, Daphne. Leslie?
Evening, Councilman Mayor. It is my pleasure to be here tonight, Leslie Amada. In this capacity, I'm serving as a member of this committee and this has been an envisioned kind of since our human master, human services master plan to add diversity to it that I was a part of, so I'm continuing the work.
Thank you, Leslie. Beth?
Good evening, everybody. Elizabeth Porter, council member. It's great to see you all and get a chance to chat as group and find out what you all been up to. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Beth. David?
Good evening. David Calabrine, I'm also a member of the ECSJ Commission and looking forward to working not only with the commission but also with the council on what we can do for our community.
Thank you, David. Kevin?
Good eating, good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Doan and it's nice to see everybody's faces here today. Looking forward to chatting with you all.
Thank you, Kevin. Fern?
Good evening, everyone. Fernando, I'm a member of the commission and excited to be here.
Thank you, Fernando. Jared?
Hi, Jared Kocel, council member. Just excited to see so many familiar faces again.
Thank you. Krista?
Krista Bates, City of Covington Executive Assistant and Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you, Krista. Regan, bring it home.
Oh, that's quite a charge there. Regan Bulley, City Manager, thanks for being here, everybody.
Thank you, Regan. And I am your mayor, Jeff Wagner, and I am so thrilled to be finally meeting as a joint session with each and every one of you, so I look forward to hearing what you have. And we'll move right into items for discussion. And the first item is the commission, mission statement, and I'll turn that over to Chuck.
And you're on, you're still on mute, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted, I didn't want my dogs to be joining us this evening, so that's why I could have been keeping it on mute. After, oh, I guess our second or third meeting, we finally called down and learnt a lot about each other as well as discussed what the goals should be and what our mission statement should sound like. And we've decided to, our mission statement should be to empower a community of diversity, equity, fairness, inclusion, and respect for all. The commission will advise the city council in creating avenues for actionable changes in policies and services. Short, sweet, and to the point. We've laid out a number of goals to promote the mission statement of equity culture and social justice. To celebrate with an equity lens, the integration of diversity and multiculturalism of our community through a variety of avenues. To facilitate a dialogue between the community through open discussions and identify common objectives. And to serve as liaison between the community and the city council. With that, I am going to turn it over to Manny and Leslie, who are gonna talk about promotion.
Thank you, Chuck.
Morning. Good evening, good evening again. So one of our goals, like Checket said, we have four goals. One of the goals, the main goal is actually to promote the mission of a mission statement of ECSJ. And I think this is very vital, given that we haven't had something like this or to this capacity, right, in the city? And so, you know, putting visibility out there that we exist. I mean, I know folks know we exist. May or may not, not everybody, you know, goes on the city council meetings and/or knows about the website or whatever. So via this goal, we're trying to see how can we promote so our citizens understand that we're here, but we're here in the capacity as liaisons. Sort of like we are their voice to bring their concerns, to bring whatever it is that they need to bring to a bigger, you know, the council, pretty much. And so we're looking forward to working on, and I know we'll later on work on sort of steps we wanna take action for the action items, rather, the little interventions we can do, I guess, is how to promote so then able visible. But how to promote that, you know, within our council, folks feel comfortable reaching out to us and saying, this is a concern, or this is what the city needs. Ms. Amara, would you like to add?
Well, just to thank you, and your expertise in this area has been so valuable. I, I just wanna say on the promote part is, I'm not actually sure that a lot of people even know this committee exists. And I think that's probably the first taxes before, before you start, you know, doing all this stuff. You want people to know who you are and who they can contact and how they can contact you. And that can be, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've sat in my congregation and told people what we do in emergency assistance and somebody will come up to me and say, "Oh, I didn't knew, know we were doing that for 10 years." They heard it the 10th time or the 20th time or whatever. So we can always over promote. And I think not only are we promoting, but I think this says a lot by our city just by developing this committee. Being proactive and trying to get out of this. I've seen measures in Covington that were done just by instinctively wa- walking with people who were on, you know, had some Black Lives Matters issue. Our mayor and our sheriff went out and walked with them in their march. And those kind of things tell me a lot about our city that we're in. But I think in promoting, it would be important for us to get the word out to our citizens. So they realize we can be a vehicle for communication. And sometimes people feel they have no voice, but they first have to know where to go to get that voice. And I think trying to give some visibility to this committee in some kind of action is kind of what we need to do to kind of like kick it off or something like that. And, and, and people feel comfortable to come to our meetings and testify. It, it isn't about us. It's about what our community members see is lacking, but what they wanna see going forward too, which will help us develop actions and going forth as, as a committee. But the, the committee here has got a lot of different voices and it's been exciting to, because it was just kind of interesting for me to join this committee and see who was on it and all the conversations and how we're gelling together and how we had our ups and downs. But promoting this committee has to be foremost an intention. It can't just be, we've now checked the box. We have to now do something with the box.
Absolutely. And if I can just add something that you said, Ms. Amara, you said, you know, we want to promote this and not just as, you know, like a checkbox. And that's what we don't want is, you know, the city developed this and so yet we're done. The work is never done, right? At we're evolving, our city is evolving. I think personally, we all evolve with this. And so it'll always, will always be working, right, to promote. And another thing I just wanted to say, when it comes to promotion, it's, you know, who are we the voice of, right? And so, you know, and that's gonna take us some time to figure out like how to promote, because I'm just sitting here thinking and conceptualizing this for myself. English is not my first language. It's my third language, right? And so coming from a background like my parents, they wouldn't know how to reach out if they needed to talk, if they needed to talk about issues or what have you. So not just linguistics, but socioeconomic status of people, you know, do people know how to use the internet, the digital world, right? And/or disabilities, right? So like promotion is when we talk about promotion, it is reaching the masses. And that may take us some time to figure out how we're gonna reach the masses. And we'll talk more about the survey and the online stuff later, but just wanted to throw that out, that promotion is for, you know, all.
And I think too, to piggyback on that is, a lot of times it might take us going to people where they are at instead of asking them to come to us, because sometimes that's very uncomfortable. Or it's not been ingrained in perhaps the way they've dealt with things. So trying to find the pockets where we can go to them to draw them out is gonna be an important part of this committee too. I think that's about all I have to say. On that, I could go on.
Thank you. So I guess before we go to the next goal, can I go back to the mission statement and see if any of the commissioners or council members have anything they'd like to add to that or questions about the mission statement? I'm, I love this mission statement. I think it really delivers a good message, but that's just my opinion. I wanna hear what, if council has any questions or if any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to add to that. And before I get to that, I see that Ira has joined us. Ira, if you'd like to introduce yourself, we all introduced ourselves already, so.
Hello, my name is Ira Thomas and what do you like, what would you guys wanna know about me? I missed the beginning, sorry.
We were just introducing ourselves for the record so that Krista had it, so. And you were on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
We appreciate you joining us tonight as well. So going back to the mission statement, do any council members have any questions or does any of the commissioners have anything they wanna add to how they came up with that or any questions they have?
I really like the word empower. I think that that's a really great way to start out the mission statement. And the mission statement as a whole is great, but just to, out of the gate, empower is great.
Thanks, Jennifer. Beth? You're on mute, ma'am.
Oh, sorry. Thanks. I would echo what, what council member Howard House said. I mean, the empowering is really huge. I also, I do have a question. Was there any element of inclusion for like physical disability and that? Was that a lens that was looked at and maybe religion and all of the, all the elements? Great. Yeah, no, I think it's fantastic. Yep.
Thank you, Beth.
If I, if I could just add, absolutely, right, so inclusion is diversity of all, whether it's, again, you know, we were talking about digital, this and that, that, everything. I, I do wanna echo something that we had all discussed was this actionable changes. And I think that spoke to at least me a lot when we were coming up with this as, you know, what are we here doing, right? So like we want change, but we can talk about change via just posting messages on Facebook and or just saying, hey, we're with you, right? But it's different when you actually make changes to whether it's policies or systematic things or what have you, where people can see, yeah, like in the last 10 years or in the last XYZ, we have changed, right? So whether they're benchmarks or whatever, I think the actionable item speaks to me most is that we're here to create change and not just say, once again, checkbook, because we have it, we're the best city there is.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, so Monty, I, that was exactly what I was just gonna mention, that I think this is an opportunity to create a commission and I appreciate the mission statement and the goals. So again, an opportunity to create something that can directly input information to the council on how we can better include these goals and these, these values into the, the things we do every day. From the, from the ordinances we pass, but also to the events that we, that we run, that sort of thing. So I really do appreciate that and encourage the commission to, to stay true to that part of the mission. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Anybody else? Well, thank you for that. I, I really like this mission statement. It really delivers a very good message. It's very well thought out. And I too agree with that word empower is, is your whole team did a good job with that. So Manny, do we wanna go on to all the goals or we wanna discuss each one individually?
It's absolutely up to you. I think our plan was to go over each.
Okay. So, thank you. So going with the first goal of what Manny, Monty and Leslie brought up to promote the mission statement of equity, cultural and social justice, does council members have any questions or do any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to add?
Christina?
Hi, everyone. I really appreciate several perspectives that I heard today specifically about this goal. It's true. It's true. As, as Monty said, this is her third language. My parents barely speak Ukrainian or English still. So to reach out, you know, you have to go to those who may not be able to come to you. One thing we know for sure is everybody eats and everybody shops for food. I think that's one of, you know, one of the easiest and probably most successful intersections where we can cross people. I'm more than willing to volunteer for that. I've always said, I kind of feel like 2020 stole a year from mingling and having that just the, the one-on-one with our, with our residents. So I, I really do appreciate that, that you have that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody else?
Well, I like the idea of promotion. I've been promoting this commission to all the other cities that I speak to because everybody wants to hear what we're doing and the fact that it's just getting off the ground. I know it's been, you guys have been working together for, what, six and a half months now, so I love that you've gotten your mission and goals already set up, so that's, that's outstanding. Seeing nobody else raise their hand, I will turn it back over to you, whoever's talking about the second goal. Is that you, Monty, or?
No, that'll be Ira and Ashley.
Ira and Ashley.
Ira?
Hello. So, um, as a committee, uh, we're good. I believe that we're a good representation of multiculturalism in our community. And I think we're just a glimpse into the goals that we have to unite our community and celebrate in, and the celebration of unity as all of us are Americans. This committee is made up of many different backgrounds, cultures, religions, ethnicities, languages. So I believe that's all of our goal to seek to create pride in our community and in our country. And within our fellow citizens in the city of Covington, to be an example of what it means to be inclusive of all people with no regard to the things that divide us as a people. But to celebrate the idea of what I believe is the greatest land, the greatest land that is the representation to the world of people loving others. I believe that's what America is. It is already multicultural in itself. It is a representation of that. We are working hard to create avenues that will give birth to the opportunity for celebration of life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness for all Americans. And I believe let us as one people for every country, for every country on earth so that they can look upon our existence in this country. I, I think we should look upon our existence in this country as a multicultural diversity and inclusive of all. And in saying that, I will do my part as part of the committee to, to seek out organizations and community members who are looking to help to build what I believe is the greatest country that never was. It never had the opportunity to become what America was supposed to be. So today, let's look upon the symbol of multiculturalism and the American flag and be proud as an American to be the symbol of diversity and multiculturalism and inclusion to the world. This is what the founding fathers laid that blueprint for and what people like Martin Luther King died for. So today, let us forge a community that sees no color, religion, gender, bias to, to others, because being an American means just that. That all citizens of the land look different. But live the same in peace, tolerance and love for the sanctity of freedom and life. So let the celebration begin. That is my talk on it. And I believe that is what we will try to accomplish is bringing people together and in oneness.
Perfect. Thank you, Ira. And I don't see Ashley online yet, so is there anybody else that wants to add to that? I always love a good celebration.
Mayor Wagner?
Yes, Leslie.
Just, just to, the word equity lens is, has been defined for me the last couple of years. And it's something that really was not in my vocabularies to go to. So it's getting it into everybody's vocabulary to understand what equity lens is and how to work with that. And how to take, you know, the way my biases may tell me to look at something and look at from a more equitable position. And I think in this committee, if we can draw out everyone to disabled, people of different orientation, different races, creeds, religions and everything, and, and bring them to the table without any barriers. And that, again, is going to where they're at. That's providing perhaps transportation if they needed to get to something or a vehicle for transportation, like we can be on Zoom here. We don't have to have a car. We don't have to have a bus, but we can get online here and talk. Those are all things that I think that an equity lens brings. And of course, my heart is with the littles and let's bring them into the picture so all our littles can have, you know, a starting place that if they didn't start at the same finish line or start at the, at the, the start line right off, they will finish the finish line with the same ability to succeed and grow and thrive. That's my love, my kids, all these kids in this community.
Thank you, Leslie. Monty?
I was just gonna add, you know, Ms. Amara just talked about the equity lens and we also wanna look at the equity lenses, you know, just like we said, meeting people where they're at. So though we want to celebrate, we also need to see how people celebrate, because, you know, it's not about just let's do a Hawaiian dance for AAPI month and call it a day. So I think it is understanding our community and some members, like Ms. Amara said, their celebration is having those barriers, those obstacles, so they can join certain things. And, and some of us Indian people, we like to have AAPI month where we feed people and have food, right? So like understanding and, and that celebration may need or may, what's the word I'm looking for? Mean different to different people. And that's exactly what equity is. It's not cookie cutter. It's how we meet folks where they are at.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add or any questions? Beth?
Yeah, just a quick question. In have, have you all noticed in your, in your, their personal experience or on this journey, are there any I would say culturally specific groups or that are already doing, like celebrating certain cultures or certain, and is there a way to incorporate that, them into the journey? Like maybe at the schools or something like that? I know that I think there's some there, but.
Well, I'm just gonna speak, because of course the schools have been having, well, they did have until we had COVID and that changed everything, but they were having multicultural nights and I participated in that at the high schools and the elementary schools and they brought in food and projects and all that. But I think one of the things is an inventory, which, which would be good to have far beyond just the things that we kind of can pick up and say, this is going on. But to find out a lot of the, that should be, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but would be a goal of this committee to actually get a list of all the things that are already going on. So we don't reinvent the wheel, but maybe we can join in that wheel and even make it better and fuller. So that's just some of my thoughts.
Thank you, Leslie. Monty?
With my work with the VA, I was a program manager for the Asian American Pacific Islander program through the EO office. And one of the big things was we do do API month where we do more of the celebrations, but also more of workforce, just development of our employees, where we talk about how to, you know, professionally get ahead of the game, if you will, right? So whether it's education or what have you. I was also part of the Native American Veterans Council where our big thing is land acknowledgement. So I think it does depend on, you know, what we're celebrating and how that community and group would like to celebrate instead of us just either putting out statements and or just assuming everybody wants a big celebration. So I think it speaks to what Ms. Amara is saying, is like knowing sort of your customers, your base and, and working with agencies, right? Like we don't have to do this, the 13, 14 of us or the council. It's reaching out to, you know, organizations from different, different backgrounds or what have you. We were approached when I was the, the chair of the commission about, about a citizen who wanted to come into our commission and talk about Pride Month. And just having, all he wanted to do was have banners or have flags up. Unfortunately, the person didn't show, so we had no idea. But, you know, so again, meeting people where they're at with the equity and seeing like what do people want? Instead of, once again, just us imposing things on people as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really do appreciate the lower my hand. The way this goal and, and kind of some of the goals are being framed, I think it really does start with a a place of inclusion and trying to recognize and empower and welcome everyone. So, you know, it, it feels like the, the commission's getting off to a really good start. And I would also encourage you, Leslie, and I think some others had mentioned about, you know, seeing where people are and, and also seeing what's out there already with the resources. So I would encourage you to be seeing where people are and and also seeing what's out there already with the resources. So I would encourage you to be um opportunistic and be entrepreneurs and really if things are going well and um, you know, say if schools already got, you you know, a a program, if there are things we can learn from them and and copy and bring to Covington, I I would encourage you to to do that. So I think it's really good that you're thinking that way and and realizing that um all of us in this in on this column in this meeting, we can't do it ourselves. So there are good ideas out there. Uh, but if there are good ideas, you know, let's see what we can take from that and and bring to us um, bring to our city and and multiply. So anyway, uh, I really appreciate it. Don't really have a question, but thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Kevin?
Going back to what Monty said about land acknowledgement, I would just love to put it out there as a resource to everybody on this commission and on the city council that the website native hyphen land.ca is a great resource for you to learn what territories you occupy. Um, with the real quick search on that website, I would like to acknowledge that we here in Covington occupy Muckleshoot, Duwamish, and Coast Salish indigenous land. Also another great resource to contribute back into the indigenous communities here, especially the Duwamish tribe. You can Google real rent, real rent Duwamish to pay rent to the original owners of this land and also help contribute to their efforts to build an equitable equitable space for the people here. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else have any questions or comments on uh celebrate on the goals?
Mayor Wagner, a question because I haven't really been on Zoom much to the Covington City Council, but the Kent School District now includes uh a land acknowledgement before every board meeting. Are you guys doing a land acknowledgement at all in in prior to or after your pledge of legion or something at your council meetings?
No, you're not.
Have you considered it?
No, I've not even heard of it before.
Yeah.
Will you consider it now?
Something to think about. Yeah.
Yeah. Something to uh bring forward to a future meeting.
I could do that.
Um, I see that Bronwyn, Thomas, and David Scalabrine have now joined us. Welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Um, with that, I guess we'll move on to the third commission goal of facilitate. And who is um discussing that?
That would be Alex and David.
Okay.
Hey, everybody. Um, can you hear me okay? I've been having some Zoom issues with my uh, uh, my laptop. So I've joined up on my phone.
Nope, we can hear you. Great. Thank you, David.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm glad to be able to get back to you. Uh, so Alex and I will be sharing you, sharing with you some ideas around the commission goal of facilitate, which is uh dialogue between the community through open discussions and I and identify common objectives of as Chuck uh initially indicated. Uh, the purpose of this would be to uncover underlying concerns in the community around equality, cultural, and social justice issues. Sharing those concerns with the city council, but then also encouraging and facilitating open dialogue amongst the community to help bring about desired results to build a stronger community. Uh, we've got a a few, just a couple of goals or objectives that we have uh identified that would fall under the facilitate. And the first one is dealing with the online survey, which I'm gonna toss over to Alex as she has had the most involvement with that out of the two of us.
Thanks, David. Um, and I hope it's okay. I know this is also on our agenda a little bit further down, but I, we thought it was most relevant to our facilitate goal. Um, so bringing it up. Um, the the purpose of a a survey to to our community would be to understand the the current climate in Covington when it comes to equity and social justice and to hear from our community members on what actions that they believe the city should uh take to make Covington a safe and diverse and welcoming place to to call home. It kind of goes back to what Monty was saying earlier that we don't want to impose upon our our community what we think is the right thing to do. We really want to be in close contact and and be hearing from people in the community about what actions they believe we should be taking. Um, so we've drafted a a survey. We're sort of, you know, as a sorry, I can't remember who said earlier, but we're being entrepreneurs about it, like how we can do it in the for free uh style. Um, we have like a a Google form um and through the survey, we'd want to um understand how demographics impact um our residents' perception of Covington. Um, collect data that we can use to set a baseline and then, you know, measure progress of the initiatives the committee takes over time. Um, and and get some feedback so we can identify a a focus area for our group. You know, we're not going to be able to act on every element of social justice all at once. And so uh we want to collect some some feedback about where we should be focusing our energies. And that way, maybe we can set like a twelve to eighteen month roadmap specific to one focus area and then, you know, move on to to different areas. Um, I I have a few questions for the city council related to the the survey if if that's all right. Um, we 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 pulled together a couple of questions just while we have your audience for each of the um, the actions that we wanted to discuss related to facility, facilitate and um, you know, stop me from taking up too much time.
No, but if, yeah, if the questions are relevant and and um don't require decision by the council, then by all means.
Sure. Thanks. Um, so uh, you know, the w- w- we had a question just around if we were to do a survey, you know, how, uh, if you had thoughts about the best way to to share it and if the city has done surveys, like if a fully online survey is possible, or if we really do need to have like a combination of printed options too, to like get the right amount of responses. Um, it just if there's any experience that we can learn from as as we plan for this, we'd love to to hear.
So we have done surveys in the past, and I know that Carla has been um in charge of that. I think Regan would have more information on that um as far as doing phone surveys and online.
Yeah. So if you want, um, if what you're looking for is like a scientifically accurate um uh survey, then they range between about thirty and forty thousand dollars for to run one in the city of Covington. So they're pretty darn expensive. Um, we we did one. It's been several years now, I believe. Is it what, Jeff? Three or four years ago, I believe we did one in in the city. Uh, and it gathered the information uh that was pretty on par with the one we had done about five years prior. But if if that's not the the route to pursue, then we do have a lot of other options. Uh, you can work with Carla and Daphne knows Carla well. She's our uh, marketing um director at the city and can help really kind of push anything out. We've got thousands and thousands of followers on social media. You get a lot of responses, which is how we've done some other surveys.
Awesome. That's super helpful. Thank you. Um, it, do you already have, sorry, so from my under, maybe the rest of my questions aren't aren't relevant. So from my understanding, past service have gone through like a um, a contractor. Um, so.
We've done, we've done some, there are community wide surveys like that. And we've also just done our own on social media. They're not, you know, scientifically accurate. We don't necessarily have the exact sample we're looking for, but it gives us good general ideas.
When you do that, um, do you have a list of like languages that you support or are there best practices, like when we're interacting with the community around language and accessibility?
So that's a really good question. We do have resources to be able to um uh provide the translations that we need. In our public works department, that's where it comes up the most when we do like uh land notices of uh land action taking place. I know it was, it's been a couple of years since this came up, and I think the direction from the state is if if you have a population of over a certain percentage, then you need to provide the different languages and Covington didn't have that in in any of them. So it's not yet been provided in multiple languages. But there are services out there that provide those translation uh for us.
Okay, awesome. I I think you answered my my third question. So I'll just ask David if he has anything to add related to.
No, I think that covered everything for that. Thank you.
Anything else you wanted to add, Alex?
Um, if it's okay, we have two other actions we wanted to discuss, and David was gonna talk about um hosting an open house.
Okay, do you want to do that now or wait until um next steps?
Um, if we could, let's just go ahead and run through our three. We have three action items and then each one of them has some questions that we would pose to the council and then we could get some feedback uh from that.
Okay. Um, before we do that, Jennifer, did you have a question about the online survey?
Did just have a comment. Um, human services did just do a survey. Um, so you could touch base with them and and check in with the process and kind of get their feeling about, you know, how successful were their efforts? Um, I know they did use the data. They presented the data to council. Um, and, you know, talked to and also get some feedback from them about um how successful was the outreach as well, not just the data itself. And obviously, they're super helpful. As you guys know, you have uh an ex uh commission member already at your fingertips, but they did do one after um Leslie left the commission very recently. So um they could um provide some feedback.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right. Uh, David or was it Alex for the next step?
Uh, I'll be taking the next one, uh, which is as Alex indicated was uh hosting open ha- an open house or open houses. The purpose of this would be, part of it would be speaking to what uh Monty and Leslie were talking about, which is bringing awareness about the existence of the commission uh and why we exist. Uh, it can also be how citizens can play a role uh as far as in their stepping up and and speaking out. Um, it would be some uh, an avenue for us to be able to share survey results if the survey is done as well as solicit input for those who aren't able to participate in a survey. Maybe there are some language barriers or uh hesitations of people filling things out, or like Monty indicated, maybe they don't have access, easy access to electronic formats to be able to take part in a survey. So it'd be a way for them to give input as well. Um, and then we can discuss uh and encourage uh on other things to do. What can we address? Uh, and that would be able to um facilitate what we're trying to do with the commission. Uh, so some questions that we would pose to the council as far as for some feedback would be how do you see uh based on where things stand currently and projected with the COVID crisis, uh, what kind of restrictions would we be looking at as far as as in person versus uh uh virtual or a mixed hybrid format? Um, other things such as special considerations that would need to be taken. Obviously, if it's in person, there would need to be um for physically handicapped, but is there also translation services that the council has done at any of their um, at any of your meetings? Do you have translation services for other languages or sign language for ASL? Things like that that we would need to take into consideration.
So on our, as far as um getting together and stuff, we have it on our council agenda tonight to discuss future meetings as far as virtual versus in person, or if there's a hybrid. Uh, so council's not discussed that yet. And I know that once council uh moves forward with that decision, then commissions will um follow shortly after. And um, as far as going with uh different languages and stuff at our council meetings as far as ASL and others, we have not provided those interpretations during council meetings as we've not had anybody request them. Uh, and I'm not sure if we even have any availability to do that. Um, and I am not sure if we've had that at any of our open houses. I don't remember having that available. But that's been twenty years. I can't remember all of them. Uh, Regan, do you know if we've provided any of that? I don't believe we have.
No, we've not provided the um translation services at at a public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So Alex, is there anything else that you can think of that I may have forgotten?
Um, no.
I know that after we have our discussion tonight, I'm, I know that uh Regan will be passing it on, whatever decision, if a decision is made tonight about meetings uh for virtual and versus in person, that will be passed on to um commissions um later on in the coming months for that as to how that will be moved forward.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Our pleasure. Anything else? Did you have one more thing you wanted to bring up?
Uh, yeah, Alex was going to talk about uh a community leader group.
Yeah, the the last thing I wanted to talk about was um putting together a group of community leaders, the people that are, you know, most frequently interacting with the the most people in Covington. So we can get more perspective on on the work we should be doing and have like a, an open dialogue between those leaders. We haven't really figured out what exactly that would look like. But um, you know, we have some ideas on the the type of people we want to talk to, you know, obviously political also religious leaders, business owners, you know, people who do a lot of volunteer work in our community or in the PTA. Um, we we talked about like not reinventing the wheel. There are a lot of other commissions, obviously, in the neighboring uh cities that do similar work. Um, and we want to hear from them on on the work they're doing and what they're learning. Um, so through that, like, we'd love to know from you all if there's something that already exists, like if you already are tracking some sort of list of of people that you frequently go to um for for feedback who are interacting with a lot of people in the community. Um, or if if not, um, if you have any ideas about like the best way to facilitate that.
Uh, I think that's an awesome idea about getting a group of people together. I I meet with a lot of different people throughout, not just the community, but everywhere across the region with other mayors, other groups. Um, I believe there's some, the uh pastors in Covington used to get together. I'm not sure if they still do uh that would speak. And I know that there's some nonprofits like through Skip and some of the other organizations that get together on a regular basis to talk, but I'll also look for input. Monty?
I was just gonna add, I think, um, Alex, thank you, and David, thank you for doing tremendous work and, you know, talking about each step. I think this just like, and this is me personally, Monty is just being a citizen right now. Wow, I just came up with fifteen other goals just within this meeting. Like, do we have translation services? We don't. Okay, let's see how we can do that. Or do we have a list of leaders we go to? We don't. Okay, can we come up with that? So I think this is lovely because this is like, we didn't know that this doesn't exist. And and, you know, even though we want bigger things, we may not get to, you know, the survey or what have you within the next five months. But maybe we can take those very small steps to even just say, yes, these things do exist. And Regan, this is how we do it. I just pick it on you, Regan.
Thanks, Monty. Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor Wagner. Um, just piggybacking on the idea of having kind of a summit on equity. Um, I think more important even than people who are strong volunteers church leaders or anything, it's leaders of communities are not really represented at the normal table. If we can find, and that's not usually a formal position. It's like who in this group is the one, if there's something that's going wrong, that comes forward and tries to make a right, either in we have a large Hispanic community here. Some other communities, but who are the people in those groups that can get the message back to all their people that they trust? They trust to come and represent them. I think we don't, I would imagine we don't have that kind of a list. But in an equity and uh culture and social justice commission, I think that kind of people at the table would be imperative because they're not normally at the table.
Thank you, Leslie. Anybody else? Comment or question on that? All right. I'd like, definitely like to hear more. All right, I'd like definitely like to hear more information on that as you bring it back, Alex. That sounds like a great idea. Um, moving forward to the next commission goal to serve, who would be um discussing that?
That is myself and uh I'm gonna be joined by Kevin.
Great.
So so let me, let me start out this way. Kevin and I had a mini meeting um the other day to discuss what we wanted to talk about service. To serve the community, we really have to become part of that community. And we want to throw out some ideas to you, which kind of takes us right into next steps of things that we think are important to get done. Like going door to door to all of our locally owned retail places and telling them that we exist and finding out who their leaders are. Um, religious organizations, maybe we go to to church services and ask to speak on behalf of the city if it's approved by the city. Um, one of the things that personally I I found distressing is that there's really no vehicle easily for disabled people. So we've got to learn how to reach out to them. Um, the ethnic groups and to the seniors who most of them are not computer literate enough to look to the um website. The only way that we can serve the community and to serve the council is to become that vehicle. Um, Kevin is gonna talk a bit, a little bit about how we get some of the youth involved.
All right, so yes, uh, and facilitate and serve the two goals go a lot of it really hand in hand. Um, and so to be present within the community and to develop connections and relationships with our neighbors, particularly the youth. Uh, a great way for us to be present there would to have a table set up, maybe within high schools. Also in stores and in high foot traffic areas where youth tend to be present. Um, as a recent graduate from Kentwood High School, uh, we'd see a flood of tables at lunchtime uh very often and they would provide a lot of different resources for, you know, finding your first job. Also, what are you gonna do after high school? And also great ways to put input on better ways the school could better serve us as students. So it would be a great way for us to be present there and ask the community and you specifically how uh they would like for us to do things for them.
It also helped to encourage our youth to become involved in the government and in the community.
Love that idea. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to add to that? Beth?
Yeah, I just have a couple of of suggestions and this will obviously need to be vetted um through the city, but you know, I'm wondering if maybe as a city, we have a a volunteer day where we have I don't know whether it be a food drive or some kind of a drive, but each commission can staff a table at a particular business. You know, we've, we've done plenty of these at like Safeway and so forth, and there's a ton of people walking in and out of there. And what a great way to say, hey, the this commission is new, we're we're sponsoring this, you know, fill in the blank drive or some kind of an event. And the other op opportunity I was thinking is that some of the apartment complexes around, um, I don't know, uh, some of them do actually have uh like social programs and things like that that they offer for their residents and, you know, a lot of them um may fall into the category, the the demographic there that um it might be a great way to get additional applicants for the commissions or just get the word out. Um, just a few thoughts, not.
Thank you, Beth. Kevin?
That's definitely something that Chuck and I have discussed, so I'm glad that we're all grooving on the same wavelength uh to definitely have a flyer put out. That's something that's easily accessible, also multiple languages. And having multiple languages on a flyer is a lot easier than having a translator in person at meetings. Also, yes, being present at uh any kind of grocery stores. I myself work at a grocery store and that is a great way for me to kind of ground myself in community needs. And I talk to a lot of different people with a lot of different views. And I feel like even though it is my occupation, it's a great way for me to get just a vibe of what everyone else around me feels and thinks. Also, Chuck and I talked about wanting to go out to businesses just on foot and talking to business owners and see how they feel about the community and everything they want to say about what's happening around them.
Thank you, Kevin. Chuck?
You know, uh, when we first, when I first joined the commission uh and we started to exchange our addresses, I sat down and mapped out where everybody lived just to see that we had representation. And I must say, we are missing some people. There's a whole group in the southwest corner of the state of the city. And we have no representation to there. We have a group of fairly liberal, open minded people having discussions. We need to also include those people that are not as open minded because their voice needs to be heard just as well as ours. So any thoughts on how do we get somebody involved from a less active community?
That is something that we've been discussing for decades, trying to get more and more people involved. And it's just getting out there and being in front, especially during Covington days. And I like your idea of being involved at um when we do nonprofit groups that Beth brought up, that would be another great way to get more people involved. Sean?
Yeah, thanks. A couple of thoughts on that. Um so uh HOAs usually have at least once a year a um annual meeting. Um, and I would and and they're often looking for uh speakers and so encourage you to try and get on those. Um, yes. Specifically, if there are uh sections of the community that are being represented represented on the um commission. Um, there, I would also go to, you know, and try and get on or or uh provide comments at every one of our commission meetings too. Um, can go and talk to them also. Um, uh, thinking like CEDIS and and things like that would be a good one to provide a comments on and say, you know, we're looking for representation on our on our uh commission as well. So those are just two ideas that I have.
Thanks, Sean. We're running out of time, so one more uh comment. David?
Yeah, I was just going to um emphasize that um, number one, I am a proud, moderate, independent who engages in in great dialogue with both the members on the far left as well as the far right. And the one thing that I have always been an advocate about, and I believe I mentioned it during my interview with the council and and you, Mr. Mayor, was that uh it's an, that we have to make sure that we have people understanding that we're, that we validate that we're hearing what their concerns are. People want to be heard. So just reaching out isn't enough. We have to let them know that we want to hear from them regardless of what their beliefs are, because that's the only way that we can educate and resolve differences and build a stronger community.
Thank you, David. Um, I hate to say that we're run out of time because I've really enjoyed our meeting today. Just one word is wow. Um, I am very impressed with the work that each of you have accomplished so far. And that mission statement is something that I am going to, I just to empower a community of diversity, equity, fairness, inclusion and respect for all. And um the commission will advise the city council in creating a avenues for actionable changes in policies and services. I am really impressed um that you each have worked together to come up with that. That is that is um uh for lack of a better word, but awesome. So thank you. Thank you for all the work and um I wish we had another hour to continue talking about this. So I look forward to um our next meeting whenever we can get that scheduled. And I want to thank each of you again for uh all that you've done. So thank you. Uh, Chuck, real quick.
Feel free to, feel free to join us at any one of our meetings, Mr. Mayor.
Well, unfortunately, um, we are not, councils are not allowed to join commission meetings. Um, yeah, it's uh but yeah, I would love to, but uh but I'm always happy to sit down and talk to each of you individually or as a small group. So at any time, but thank you again, each of you tonight for joining us. And thank you again for all of your hard work that you are doing on the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. I hope that you each have a great evening and um I look forward to our next meeting. Thank you again and have a great evening.